John Gilman.
Samantha Farnes.
Jordan Alvin.
Has everyone read the minutes from October 17th? Can I make a motion or approve it? May I on favor? That's unanimous. Public items, first one is CZ 2014-005M, Pliler Town Homes modifications.
Mr. Chair, do I need to formally, I'm going to accuse myself of participating in this due to the proximity of my home to this project.
Okay. Sophia.
Just remind you that your proximity does not necessarily disqualify you from serving on the board in this instance case.
I mean, I would... So the conversations that we've had and kind of the feedback at some of the community meetings, I was planning on addressing some of those concerns.
Okay.
Would there be any, I mean, from what we've talked about before, do you see any conflict in any of that? I just want to make sure that there's no conflict of interest based on my recommendation.
No, I think conflict of interest is, you know, financial gain. Conflict of interest is, you know, vested interest in the project, having familial relations, things of that nature. You know, I think that proximity to the subject property is not necessarily disqualified. In fact, I don't want to force you to be, you know, at the dais.
Okay.
If it's something you're not comfortable with, you can't render an impartial decision or recommendation on, then I'd say go ahead and continue with your initial action. I just wanted to ask you.
Mr. Chair, I'll withdraw my previous comment.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and take this case, and this is a residential mockation for Pliler Town Homes, case number CZ 2014-005M, and it's for a mockation. The request before you is to modify a previously approved conditional zoning district for multifamily designation. It's, the subject property is six and a half acres, it is a wooded site. The previous approval was for 35 townhomes, and the town council previously approved this project on June of 2015. The modification centers on just a few key elements. One is the original project was designed around a rear alley system. This proposed modification seeks to remove that and replace it with a front driveway system to access the units. Two is to increase the unit count as a result of efficiencies of removing alleys. There's a greater capacity for adding more units, so raising the unit count from 35 units to 41 units. Results, the change in density would go from 5.4 units per acre to 6.3 units per acre, still relatively modest for a townhome community. And there's some related associated changes that we'll talk a little bit more as well. Okay, just for those, for the, yes, ma'am.
Can I ask the question now?
I'll be happy to take a question from you.
Yeah. Will these be homes for condos?
I'd say, I will ask, I think the applicant has a representative here that will address some of the, provide supplements to my presentation. I'll ask if they include specific mention about that. All right, you want me to? For those, for those that may be not familiar with this exact location, the subject property is located on Pliler Road between Union Village and Trail Road and US 74. It's the red parcel, the red white parcel that you see on the screen. It's located adjacent to the Cranston Crossing neighborhood and across from Ridgefield Base 2, and it's located next to the Coatings Technology Site or CTI. Okay. Back in 2014, this is the original concept plan that was approved by the town council and the planning board had also recommended approval. As you can see, the, from a, from a, you know, design standpoint, you have a rear alleyway system, you have a rear alley system, again, six and a half acres, 35 dwelling units, and you had two storm monitors, two stormwater devices on the subject property, one in the center and then one off to the side. And those will be, you guys have some features I'll call out later on in the revised plan. Okay. I don't have a color rendering for the modified plan, but I'll walk you through this in some detail. So again, same site, six and a half acres. We have a higher unit count of 41 units as a result of the alleyways being removed, and I'll show you what that looks like in greater detail. So all you guys just kind of zoomed in on one of blocks. You have now the front driveway serving the subject, you know, the subject lot, if you will, for the townhome. As you can see to the rear, there will be more kind of green space, rear yard space versus having the alleyway run through the rear of the property. Another distinguishing feature from the old plan versus the new plan is there is now a cul-de-sac at the end of the main entry street, and off this cul-de-sac here you're going to see is a, actually, garbage enclosure, dumpster enclosure system. And so the advantages of that is that you won't have cans now in front of the units and have to kind of manage the storage and display of those. So that's a different feature. And again, as you, if you recall earlier, I mentioned there were two stormwater devices on the original previously approved plan. Here, because of the smaller, reduced amount of impervious surface, they've been able to manage all the stormwater in one centralized feature. So that's a distinguishing feature element. Okay, so when you compare the two side by side, that's kind of how they, that's how they look. By and large, I mean, still relatively the same community that was previously approved in 2014, or same concept overall. You just have the alleys removed, you have six additional units, you have a cul-de-sac at the end that'll, that'll have a dumpster enclosure structure. Otherwise, you know, the main elements of the plan are the same from 2014, same concept. Now, I've had a, some of you may have received an inquiry from one of the planning board members, just wanted to kind of cover some, you know, additional information on parking, so I wanted to incorporate that into this presentation in case anyone didn't get a chance to check email before the meeting, just to educate the board on how parking is managed in really all townhome communities per UDO, but more particularly in this case as well. So townhome communities, townhome lots, if you will, are required to have two parking spaces per lot. That can be managed through having a garage, parking pad and driveways, or a combination of the two, like a one-car garage and a one-stall parking pad, just by driveway. So that's, that's how it's, parking is addressed for townhomes. The original Pliler plan really just created options. There could be garages, or it could be parking pads, or the combination. They hadn't drilled down into the concept deep enough at that time to know what their builder was going to desire. This revised concept is more geared towards having parking pads at the front, so you'll have two full-size parking spaces in front of the unit for each, for each townhome. And just show you what that looks like. So that's kind of a little lot blow-up of a given townhome lot. And so the driveways will be approximately 18 feet wide and 22 feet deep. And so that's going to be sufficient space to have two cars parked side by side and also have plenty of room for depth, so you don't have the bumper hanging over the sidewalk, if you will, and plenty of room to walk around it for accessing the unit or just, you know, circulating in front of the lot. So that's what the driveway pad will look like relative to the townhome lot. And again, it ensures there's plenty of parking on site and it's not creating any kind of impediment to the public driveway system. And then also a component of the UDO is having guest parking, and there will be 26, there will be 26 on-street parking stalls provided as reflected in the current concept plan. That's roughly five more than the UDO requires, but that will be an element that really hasn't changed from the old plan to the new plan. There's, that's around that circle you saw on-street parking stalls, and the intent is still the same to have those for guests or people who has more than two vehicles. So as with all conditional zones, including major modifications, we held two community meetings. They were both held in a daytime and evening in this room. We had eight total attendees participate, and they covered a variety of topics, driveways versus alleys, construction timing, were the questions regarding the sale of the units, are they for sale, or are they rental, the size, construction elements, there were some traffic issues discussed. And overall, though, the, I think that feel comfortable and has reflected in the minutes that are in your package, the temperament of the neighbors was very supportive of the changes. They didn't see the removal of the alleys for the driveways as being detrimental. They were all fairly supportive of the project. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the all re-zones, including modifications, we go back to comprehensive plan and examine it for consistency. We see, find the same, we determine the same findings can be found that were approved in 2014. It's supportive from a land use and housing standpoint and mobility and transportation. I'm going to go ahead and just read those findings as a record. "The proposed modified district provides for quality residential use at an appropriate location, providing more appropriate transition between land uses. The proposed modified district includes a construction of curved veteran sidewalk, enhancing mobility, which enhances mobility in the area, construction of roadway improvements, and dedication of right away on an adjacent road to meet the future transportation needs of the community. The modified district is a reasonable request. It is in the public interest because it continues to create an appropriate transition, transitional use between single-family while also creating a mix of housing sizes within the 74 West Ford or, and providing expanded opportunities for, housing opportunities for citizens and Indian Trail. And we find it otherwise, you know, in general conformity with the comprehensive plan." So we're going to ask that you receive this report and any public comments, and I think he's going to bring you a signed up sheet. We also, would I be considered draft by you? We're asked that you recommend approval of CZ 2014-005M as we presented. We do have representatives of the applicants that I think want to present a few items to you, and I believe there may be some folks that want to sign up for public comment, or have signed up for public comment. Any other immediate questions that you have, or if I'll ask the applicant, please can.
Is this development for 55 and over?
So the, the project is, you know, I said, the applicant said supplement this in case I miss a beat on my, the community as, as it was in 2014 continued to be an age-targeted community where they're, they're not only establishing, disrupting the units to be supportive in the older demographic, most of the units will be one-story with, which may also better be done ground floor. There will be some Indian units that are stored and have, but the vast majority will be ground floor, master, you know, ground floor, whatever, two or three story construction. But it will not be age-restricted, it'll just be targeted.
Has there been a price range determined on the value?
I'll ask the applicant to, to address the price, any pricing. Yes, ma'am.
The mail kiosk.
Yes.
If we're, if it's going to be age-targeted, you have to, you know, where it's located, you'll have to remember that if these people come in at 55, knee replacements, hip replacements, all sorts of replacements are going to go on, and, and to walk all the way down, you know, way down the road here to get your mail is what might, may become an issue. Because as people live, they'll walk, that 55's going to turn into 65, and 65's going to turn into 75.
Absolutely. And it's really, it's a balancing act, and we've talked about in the past, that, you know, the United States Postal Service has gotten incredibly strict on where, on the provision of these mail kiosks and where you put them in the community. Obviously, for the, to help address the challenges, they're trying to manage, they want in the most accessible and easy to locate facility. I think this is trying, the current location generally is trying to balance, one, putting it in a common area that's close, you know, close to the entry, so when you come home, you have an option, you can come home and park your car and get the mail in the way you're thinking. Or B, if you're the beaker in the community, you could pull over and go onto on-street parking stalls and walk out and get your mail and manage it that way. And so I think it's...
I see a issue that maybe the ADA may take up at some point.
Well, that is a requirement, if you, going back to the screening standards, that they do require it be ADA-accessible, that all individuals have to be able to access them all, it's very important. You know, I'll ask the, if the applicant or the representative have anything more to add in the design of this, so they can add to that as well. Yes, sir.
I have a question. The town center apartments are going to be in that area. Is it going to be an entrance off of town?
Yes, there will be a, there will be a Pliler entrance, so the site, I mean, right now you see, it's an outdated aerial, the building, all the buildings are not here, but there is, there is two entrances, one on Unionville and one on Pliler for that separate project. Any other questions?
I had a few, I had a few questions. Mr. Roth and I spoke about this earlier regarding the turn, the turn lane in front of the Piedmont natural gas lines. Understand that the Department of Transportation approved, approved this, and this is something that I had, had looked at, or I guess I didn't give much attention until the revision, because I, I guess the turn lane was the same in the old draft, just like it is in this one. I didn't pay, pay close enough attention. Just some concern as far as where that turn lane is in relation to that gas line, and then it's bringing it, we were talking some distances, it's bringing asphalt within about five or six feet of that big gas line, and didn't know, just to kind of put a visual. There are some, if you're coming down Unionville Indian Trail, kind of approaching it, there are, there's a chain link fence, there's really, there's some trees.
Yep, exactly.
So the, the right-hand side of it, there are no steel concrete barriers, so incoming traffic, the only thing that protects the car coming, which is virtually five or six feet from that, is chain link fence. So just some concern from the public and some of the neighbors around it, is just the, bringing a turn lane and there's not, there's no protection against cars coming that close to them. So we had, we had a conversation around that, there's some things in the works, so maybe kind of make kind of a talking point.
So, Mr. Chair, are there any other questions for us?
Yeah.
And again, I think if you would like to have the applicant respond to me to some of the questions, and you could arrange your public comments.
And we'll go to public comments.
There's no more, can I ask you the moment we get to?
I'm just ready.
If you will bear with me, let me, let me say a few things first, and then I'll try to teach you the questions that have been presented this evening. First of all, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the planning board. My name is John Roth, I'm with Eagle Engineering. We are here assisting the petitioner and the developer as, as a consultant, and that's our capacity on this project. Roth, thank you for your diligence as always, and for your very thorough review and your presentation. If you'll go to slide one. Roth, sorry to be a little bit repetitive here, but I think it builds the, builds the whole story. So this is the plan as it was presented, ultimately approved in early, early 2015. This is the site that, this plan has the perimeter alleyway that Roth described, has the, the turn lane and the taper on Pliler Road, has all rear load parking pads and townhome units with all the guest parking on a fairly tight interior loop, and Roth pointed out the two different water quality features that were a part of that site. Since this plan was approved beyond the zoning approval of this plan, the petitioner's actually gone through the process of developing construction documents based on this plan. So as it stands today, we currently have approved site construction plans, building construction plans, actually, a grading permit to start construction on the site. In the final throes of, the final push of pulling this together, the developer has gone through and assessed a few things, one of which is market demand for this product. Over the last two years, they've reached out to a number of builders to say this product is a rear-load product, can you, will you build this, does it make good financial, good economic sense? And the resounding answer to that has been no, unfortunately. I think there's some case studies here even in the town with alleyways around the site. First of all, the central portion of this site would be owned and maintained as a street in the town of Indian Trail. The rear alley all the way around the perimeter would be privately owned, privately maintained by the developer initially and ultimately the HOA. And that in itself creates the burden of that maintenance, makes this a bit prohibitive for development. If you would go to slide two, please. So this is the updated site plan. You saw this a few moments ago. If you go on to the next one, Roth, I think the rendered version of the existing site plan maybe speaks the better story here. So in response to the, to the market demand, we've gone to a front-load product. You see the white driveways, parking pads at each and every unit. You see the collective cul-de-sac here with the waste refuse collection point. The turn lane and taper on Pliler Road is exactly the same as it was before. Please note that this substation and this gas easement are owned by Piedmont Natural Gas, they are not owned by the developer. The developer has no right, no influence to be on, on that property. The, in the redevelopment of the site, we were able to pull the road, the interior loop, a bit wider, created more road frontage. We were able to consolidate and do the, the sizing of the water quality features, so some more efficient, larger stormwater management facility in the center of the site. We actually have a little bit less impervious area. We removed the alley. There are six more units that you see on here, even with that, the impervious area is a little bit smaller than what it was prior. Removing all the asphalt around is a big benefit, and we're able to do a more efficient, little bit larger water feature in the center of the site. Everything else with the zoning remains intact as it was approved once before. All the conditions, all the commitments made by the developer are the same as they were once before, including, Roth, if you could hit the, the next slide real quick. So these are the actual buildings themselves, these are the plans that were submitted, found to be consistent with the approved zoning. The buildings don't change from the two development types. The zoning, this is just a site change, not a building change. The driveways are now in front of the units rather than entering from the backside of the blocks. So Roth, I'm going to ask you to go back just one more if you would, thank you. So as Roth mentioned, on November the 9th, development team conducted two community meetings, and you're back there on the summary of those conversations. In general, I believe the public response for the modified site plan, especially with the removal of the rear alley, was found to be very positive. Specific discussion points that came up were, are these units for rent or are they for sale? All of these units are to be sold. They are not rental units, the developers not building a rental program here. So they are attached, single-family dwellings, townhomes. They're not condos, they, people will have a simple title to the properties. Size and price points was a part, a discussion point that came up in the community meetings. All of these units, the interior units are a little bit smaller than the exterior, the exteriors are the one and a half story, they are all, I believe they're all master down. The, they're expected to range in size from just under 1,000 to just over 1,400 square feet, and to range in price from the low to the mid 200,000s. The question came about, are they age-restricted? No, they are not age-restricted, but they are age-targeted with the master down product, with most of them, the majority of the units being single level, all with the master down, they are age-targeted. There was a great deal of discussion of, or not a great deal, there was discussion about the natural gas, small substation that does exist right here. Again, it's not part of this project. There is a roadway improvement that is closer than it was once before. We committed in the public meeting that we would reach out to Piedmont Natural Gas, and we've done so. I spoke specifically to Mark Childers of Piedmont Natural Gas, presented the concerns that were expressed specifically about the barriers that occur. Roth, can we go back to the, to your image on the Piedmont Natural Gas? Those barriers exist on the roadside and on the east side. So the road is here, the site is, the trees, all of these trees, you say, the site are, the trees behind the site. So if you're approaching from, from where we're sitting, if you drive to the site, this is what you approach, and there are trees here. They're not on our property or on Piedmont's property, but there are trees here. When I asked Mr. Childers specifically, why would there be a barricade on the roadside and on the east side, but not on the west, he said his best understanding is, as you approach from the west going toward the east, if you're going this direction, you actually don't encounter the curve until you're right at or past the substation. So if you miss the curve, you just run on past it and into some trees. From the other direction, if you miss the curve, you could run into the substation, and that's why he was describing the fact that there's that barricade on the opposite side, but not on this side. However, he did commit that he would send construction crews out there, take a look, try to address the concerns, he has all my contact information. It's not a dead issue or a done issue, it's one that has been brought to their attention, and we will continue to pursue a resolution, or at least put Piedmont Natural Gas on notice that there is, there is an improvement being made. Roth, I'm sorry, if we could go back to, I should have just taken the mouse, right? If we could go back to the black and white image if you would. There we go. So there is a turn lane and a taper that occurs, there is a widening of the pavement. The beginning of that fence, the bollards that you saw, is actually 19 feet from the existing edge of pavement. We're adding an 11-foot travel lane and then a curving gutter section, okay? The, the travel lane itself is all striped, so you act, a car would, coming from this direction, a car doesn't even begin to fade over to the right until it's almost, or even past the substation itself. This is not a travel lane, this is a transition lane. DOT requires that we do a full-width paving with a curving gutter and stripe it to keep the cars in the lane before they transition over. Again, we've submitted to DOT, they reviewed it, they've approved it, we understand that there's a question with Piedmont Natural Gas, and we'll continue to try to work and resolve that. The mail kiosk. The mail kiosk is in the community gathering area. There will be a feature, a roofed feature that is the gathering area, and all of that will be on the ADA-accessible path, so everyone will have their free access from every unit to the mail kiosk, to the public street, to the public rights away. That's a, that's a very fair question. And yes, we're not big proponents of clustered mailboxes, but the United States Postal Service dictates that that's, that's the way we do it now. I don't have anything further technically to add, but I'll be certain glad to answer any questions that you might have with me.
What is your start, proposed starting date in 2018?
A good question, presuming that this goes successfully here through the council. We will have to go back to the drawing board to update our construction documents. I would anticipate early summer construction start at this point, maybe late spring.
Okay, thank you.
There will be a lot of pressure to get these drawings submitted back, but it's imminent, nobody wants to wait any longer with it.
Has Piedmont Natural Gas given you any type of timeframe when they would send that construction crew out or any, any, just?
They have not.
Feedback, they just said we'll get to it?
They did, that's correct.
And then one other question, the, they're being built to sell, to sell, not rent, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We had a discussion that the current Pliler town, or the, I guess the current website that lists these, under the old plan, has then?
Right. There has been internal discussion, and the answer is, they are forced out. Yes, the developer is not billing their product to rent here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions?
I know you've got, I'd like you've got some people signed up for public comment. If that warrants any further discussion, I'm certain that...
Any of these concerning? Okay, this? Come on up, please. Jonathan, please, name. Name and address.
Jonathan Bear, my address is on record. My other question as to a matter of protocol. And, uh, so, um, am I correct in understanding that this board is an independent board? Under that understanding and with respect, due respect to Mr. Head, for this matter, any matter that will be for vote today, um, I was just wondering if it's appropriate for him to be able to vote tonight on anything that will be presented to him on the council?
Well, if you want me to, I mean... I think what you're asking is, is in light of Mr. Head being elected as a member of Town Council, is it appropriate or possible for him to serve on the planning board tonight in advisory capacity? Uh, Mr. Mr. Head has, uh, dear correction, Mr. Head has been elected to a Town Council position. Mr. Head has not been sworn in as an, uh, as a, as a Town Council member. Also, please, also keep in mind, the planning board functions differently than, say, the Board of Adjustments since that, uh, the planning board doesn't make any decisions. The planning board is simply an independent advisory group. They, they provide advice to the Town Council, they do not reach, they do not make decisions. So that's how I respond to your request.
Okay. And again, with due respect, I just wanted to make sure that the proper protocol was hollowed. Thank you. Any other, uh, public comments?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Uh, my name is Jerry Morse, resident of Indian Trail, and my address is on file as well. Um, I did attend one of these, um, public meetings and my concern, well, that I shared with, uh, the developer was the increase in density. And that seems to be the common thread of what's going on in Indian Trail. Time after time, we have these projects that are approved and then we have the developers coming back and asking for a conditional rezoning. This is a major, um, and here we are going to increase the, the density by seventeen percent, six units. Doesn't sound like much. However, when, when you have a five-pound bag of sugar and you put five pounds of sugar in that bag and then you try to add another cup, you get some spillage. You know, it's six units, twelve cars, if we're taking averages, it's not age-restricted. Possibly what, two children, twelve more kids in, in the schools. So, you know, as, as I was campaigning of this past election cycle, that was, um, expressed to me quite often is why do we have to keep putting more residential into what we have here? The project as it was presented originally, I like it. Um, one thing that I did ask when I was at the, the public meeting is you have Plan A and you have Plan B. Well, if the market is driving this, why isn't there a Plan C that keeps the same number of units, but, uh, you know, redesign the roads and...